Welcome to the Thursday, May the 25th, 2017, regular session of the Xenia City Council. We've been in special session since 6:00 PM this evening, talking about budget priorities for our upcoming year. And we are now ready to begin. Our first item will be an invocation by Reverend John Freeman from the United AME Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the mayor. You would please rise with me for the invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you today to intercede for our city government. First of all, we want to say thank you for how you protected the city and surrounding areas last night. If it had not been for your grace, we may not even be meeting tonight. We pray that you, Lord, would protect our way of life. We ask that you embed these men and women who serve on our council, who have committed to serving this community with integrity. We pray, God, that you would be with this meeting. We ask you, Lord, to grant them wisdom, to act with integrity. We pray, Lord, that you would guide us as your word stands in Exodus 18:21. Select capable people from all the people, men and women who fear God, trustworthy men and women who hate dishonesty. Point them and bless them and anoint them as they serve. In the holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you Reverend Freeman and Mayor. May I have roll call, please?
Vice President Smith.
Here.
Councilman Wallace.
Here.
Councilman Lauterback.
Councilwoman Mays.
Here.
Councilwoman Mills.
Mayor Bayless.
Here.
President Engel.
Here. Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, for approval of minutes for the April 27th, 2017 regular session, please?
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by the mayor, second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Wallace. Discussion or question on this set of minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And now, motion, please, for the May 11th, 2017, special and regular session.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by Councilwoman Mays, second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Discussion or question on this set of minutes, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Abstain.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. At this time in the agenda, we have an opportunity for a public-
Mr. President?
Yes?
May we offer a motion to excuse Councilman Lauterback and Councilwoman Mills at this time?
Thank you very much. I have a motion to excuse Councilman Lauterback and Councilwoman Mills. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, we have an opportunity for a public hearing. And this is for a rezoning of a total of 13.941 acres at 1017 and 1051 Stevenson Road, from R1A, one family residential district, to A1 agricultural district. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's public hearing, as indicated, is for the purpose of considering your request for an ordinance rezoning two parcels at 1017 and 1051 Stevenson Road totaling 13.941 acres from R1A, one family residential district, to A1 agricultural district. As detailed in the public agenda hearing, uh, excuse me, public hearing agenda report, the subject properties are comprised of two parcels, one of which includes a single-family home on 1.247 acres, and the other parcel includes a barn, woods, and open fields totaling 12.694 acres. Adjacent to the north of the site property, uh, excuse me, adjacent to the north of the subject properties is a single-family home subdivision, and to the east, south, and west are a mix of farms and single-family homes and large lots with undeveloped acreage. The subdivision to the north is located in Xenia Township and is owned R1, single-family residential under township zoning. Land to the east is also in the township and is owned agricultural, again, under township zoning. Land to the south is in the city and is owned R1A. Land to the west is in the city and is owned PUD for single-family residential development. The applicant desires to operate an archery range, which is permitted in A1, but not the R1A district. The subject properties were granted a variance by BZI to allow continued usage of the non-conforming horse form. However, this variance does not extend to other uses permitted in the A1 district like the archery range. The requested change represents a minor deviation from the city's comprehensive plan. The proposed zoning is congruent with general recommendations for adjacent land to the east. Additionally, the A1 zoning is consistent with surrounding land uses and zoning and reflects a general slowing of residential development in this portion of the city. Staff does not anticipate negative impacts to the surrounding properties. Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on May 4th, 2017, and endorsed the proposed rezoning. The finance director and I have agreed to waive the city's policy for fiscal impact analysis of this rezoning, given that the area is to be rezoned, is relatively modest in size and likely difference in cost-revenue ratio is fairly insignificant. Staff request city council conduct a public hearing and consider introduction of the ordinance to rezone the properties as indicated.
Thank you very much. At this point, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone who would like to speak for this rezoning to step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments three to four minutes, please. Seeing no one, if anyone would care to speak against this rezoning, you would please step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments three to four minutes, On the subject of the rezoning, if anyone would wish to speak either for nor against, please step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments three to four minutes. On the subject of the rezoning, if you wish to speak neither for nor against, please step to the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and invite one of my colleagues to introduce-
I'll introduce that, Mr. President.
Introduced by the Vice President. Thank you very much. At this point, we have an opportunity for audience comments. Anyone wishing to address the Xenia City Council this evening, please? Step to the podium, provide us your name and address, limit your comments three to four minutes, please.
Hello, my name's Dr. Edward Council. I live at 252 North King Street. I'm an environmental consultant and expert in a lot of different areas for environmental development. I was reading the documentation about your minutes about developing the two parcels associated with the cemetery, and it kind of caught my interest, so I started doing some, a little bit of reviewing, because I've had to deal with these things before with ODOT. And I looked at the parcel, the one to the, what is it, the south, the one that you're going to acquire, and the first thing that hit my, I saw, it was relatively small. And if there was going to be a cemetery put there, the permit application with the state or the governing body may end up eating a sizable portion of it with setback requirements. So, given the fact that they are looking at about two-point-something acres, and you might lose a quarter acre, or, excuse me, a half acre on each side, if that remaining parcel is going to meet the needs of the city for the popper's field, is that going to be enough for, for putting it for some period of time? There's also, it's kind of not usual to put in a cemetery right where it's a fairly high-density area of individuals, because you have vapor intrusion issues. I don't know how the individuals are going to be buried, if they're going to be, you know, with formaldehyde or whatever, but it does create a little bit of a problem for the individuals nearby if some of this starts to migrate. The other issue was tied on to the acquisition of the historical cemetery, and looking how that was positioned, whether or not you're going to be able to get access through that cemetery into the new section without potentially running over buried bodies that you have no idea of. Because wherever the cemetery, the headstones are, that's not exactly where all the individuals are buried. And the only way you can tell that is do something with GPR to be able to outline where the individuals are located, and try to put the road in where you're not locating it on top of these individuals. So, given the fact of the issues with the development on the backside, you might have, you know, some NEPA, you might have SHPO getting involved, if you have any buried remains of the church, if that's still there, or with the removal of the batteries with fish and wildlife, if indeed this piece of parcel is going to meet the needs of the city, given you might not be able to do much with it for a while. So, it was not necessarily to comment do or not do it, it's just that have these things been thought of through the due diligence phase to see if it's going to be able to actually work, or if it's just going to create unforeseen problems into the future. Now, I know you can't really respond, it's just that something you guys might want to think about before you make an act, you make the decision to buy or not buy it, is that is it going to work for you in the future or just get tied down in bureaucracy? So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. I would suggest perhaps a separate meeting with our city manager, he's been primarily leading the-
Sure, I'll be able to help him whatever I can.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. President, Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, lady and gentleman, Xenia City Council, and Xenia administrators. I'm Thomas Scrivens, I still reside by the grace of God at 725 Lexington Avenue here in the city. Mr. President, be real brief tonight. Happy to see the city on the move. Today was a great day in terms of dedication of the Bennett Splash Park, Bennett Depot at Xenia Station there. Nice to see all the city officials on hand, working together diligently, getting the job accomplished before the rain. And just wanted to give everybody a big thumbs up. Everybody was doing a great job today, and made Xenians proud that don't normally come out and take, partake in events in the city. Look forward to the kids enjoying an amenity long last needed. One of these days, I hope the city will finance a swimming pool. There's a park that's sitting almost fallow that needs a good draw, and a swimming pool for the city would not only draw our city residents, but all around. Give kids something to do during the summer, we could keep a good eye on them. Downtown's looking a lot better, sir. Appreciate you getting in behind the public service people and getting the yellow paint out. Now, we can just keep the yellow paint moving, a lot of intersections that need to be demarcated a little clearly. Other than that, need to get our city crews back out again on the storm drains. Every time we have a rain event, we wash down and we clog the drains. We have to get rid of stormwater. That's a major problem. Okay? So, let's not let these drains stay clogged up no more than a couple of days after a rain event. I did my rounds, I saw a lot of clogged drains. Mr. President, with that, I thank you for the time, and thank you for the council taking an active role in getting the community on one accord. It just feels good to be a Xenian today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come and address the Xenia City Council this evening, please? Seeing none, we will move to reports of committees. Vice President Smith, please, planning and zoning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Xenia Planning and Zoning Commission met on Thursday, May 4th, for three agenda items. The first was review and approval of 360 Wilson Drive for the Green County Health Department Building. That was voted in favor, four to zero. The second was a conditional use for food sales at 1307 North Detroit Street by that applicant, that was also approved. And the last item was the item we just had the public hearing on, the rezoning of 13.94 acres on Stevenson Road by applicant Nick Lamott, that was also voted by the planning commission and endorsed. Our next meeting will be actually June 15th. We will not have a meeting the first of June, it'll be moved to the June 15th at 7:00.
Thank you very much. Anything for Vice President Smith in planning and zoning, please? Mayor Bayless and Mr. Mayorman, mayors and managers, please.
We did not attend the last mayors and managers meeting. I had an invitation to speak for one of the retiring teachers at the Xenia Retirement Dinner.
Thank you very much. Anything for the mayor and city manager under mayors and managers, please? Councilman Lauterback is not with us this evening, so we will reschedule his report on MVR PC, and we will move to items from city council and mayor. We have two items for consideration this evening. The first item is a proposal to make use of a standard form for city candidate positions for use by the Green County Board of Elections. Summary reads, "In 2015, the Green County Board of Elections brought to the city's attention that the nomination petition form used for city of Xenia mayor and council member elections was not the standard Secretary of State Form 3-0, which is used by all Green County municipalities except the city of Xenia and the village of Yellow Springs. At that time, the Green County Board of Elections asked that the Xenia City Council consider adopting use of the standard form following the November 3rd, 2015 election cycle. It's now appropriate to consider use of the standardized form for all future elections. If approved, the city clerk will notify the Green County Board of Elections accordingly." Is there a motion, please, to recommend this action?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Mays, second, please.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Wallace. Discussion or question on the motion, please?
So, the first one's the one we had, and the second one is the proposed changes?
Correct.
But the second one is the one that is used throughout the state?
Yes.
And the one that's recommended by the board?
Any other discussion or question, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next item is an approve, approve a wage adjustment performance bonus for appointed officials. Summary reads, "In accordance with the employment agreements between Brent W. Mayorman and Mark A. Baselak in the city of Xenia, city council can provide appointed officials increased compensation in the form of a salary increase, bonus, and/or other considerations. City council proposes increasing the city manager's annual salary from $105,000 to $108,000 per year. City council also proposes approving a $2,500 lump sum bonus in recognition of the finance director's contributions and performance achievements over the past year." There are two motions to consider. The first is a motion to approve a wage adjustment for Brent W. Mayorman, our city manager, in the amount of $3,000. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by the mayor, second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mays. Discussion or question on the motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And now, a second motion, please, to approve a performance bonus recognizing the contributions of Mark A. Baselak, our finance director, in the amount of $2,500 to be paid as a lump sum. I will make that motion and ask for a second, please.
Second then.
Seconded by the Vice President. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything else for us to consider from my colleagues under items from city council and mayor, please? Seeing none, we'll move to reports of city offices. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. President Council. Appreciate council's not of confidence this evening. First item this evening is a recommendation that city council take two actions necessary to facilitate the acquisition of property for establishment of an indigent cemetery and to acquire an adjacent historic cemetery for preservation purposes. The city council will recall a number of years ago, state legislation was passed that mandated local governments take full responsible, full responsibility for the disposition of remains of individuals who expire within our corporate limits, who are deemed by local authorities to be indigent, which is loosely defined as lacking sufficient economic resources through their estates or families to process their remains. Since this requirement was put in place, the city of Xenia, like most in our region, has experienced a substantial annual growth in the number of indigent burial applications and subsequent approvals. Increasingly, two problems have emerged as a result. First, some families are seeking to take advantage of having the expense of their loved ones cremation at taxpayer's expense, and then want the remains turned over to them for services in permanent possession. Many such cases are clearly a result of individuals merely not wanting to take responsibility for the family members' remains and wanting to push the expense on to taxpayers. Second, we are experiencing more cases where individuals expire without living family members. In such cases, the city is required to handle final disposition of the cremains by either undertaking the expense of incurring them at an appropriate burial facility or keeping the remains at a city facility. At present, we have multiple sets of remains located in the city manager's office due to lack of any other appropriate and dignified location, as the city has no cemetery facility. Excuse me. And, excuse me, evaluating all options for the most cost-effective, effective, and appropriate solution to these issues, staff arrived at the consensus that developing our own indigent cemetery was the best long-term solution that was both cost-conscious and provided dignity to those deceased left in our care. Concurrent with these indigent burial matters, the city was approached by parishioners of the Xenia Memorial United Presbyterian Church, who are seeking the city's consideration to accept a donation of the historic Gowdy Reform Cemetery in the 500 block of each East Church Street. The Gowdy Reform Cemetery is one of Xenia's earliest cemeteries, established at the beginning of the 19th century by the Gowdy family. Through various consolidations, mergers, transactions, ownership of the care, excuse me, ownership and care of the Gowdy Cemetery facility was vested many years ago in the United, excuse me, the Xenia Memorial United Presbyterian Church. Although ex-MUPC has effectively maintained the cemetery over the past several decades, in recent years, the church has grown concerned with its aging membership, lack of ties to the cemetery, and the cost of continued maintenance. Consider also that under Ohio Revised Code, the city of Xenia would be required to assume maintenance responsibility of the property if the church were unable to continue the maintenance function. The Gowdy Reform Cemetery contains remains of Xenia's earliest residents, including several veterans of the War of 1812. As a result, staff views the Gowdy Reform Cemetery as a unique and culture, a critical piece of Xenia's history and culture, the preservation of which is a worthy public purpose. Furthermore, the site has interpretive and educational value, and we believe its existence should be promoted as a historic landmark. Staff suggests that the city's only interest in the Gowdy Cemetery, Reform Cemetery should be to preserve, enhance, and promote it as a local historic site. Adjacent to the south of the Gowdy Cemetery is a vacant, mostly-landlocked 2.017-acre parcel, which is large enough to support the city's indigent burial needs for the foreseeable future. The owner of the latter parcel is willing to sell for $11,000, which staff believes is a reasonable price, given reviews of other vacant lots, sales, and the surrounding neighborhood. City staff presents city council with the unique proactive opportunity to acquire both parcels and address both a historic preservation need and a modern practical need, and frankly, legal obligation at the same time in one location. City staff has prepared a conceptual site plan for the 2.017-acre property, which was included in the agenda report. Plan presents a proposed layout of grave sites for the cremains. Staff estimates that the property could hold over 5,700 cremains, and that the city will receive up to 20 burial requests per year. The 2.017-acre property will therefore serve the city's needs for the foreseeable future. Acquisition of the Gowdy Reform Cemetery and the vacant lot would require ordinances from city council appropriating necessary funds for purchase and the due diligence cost. This evening, staff is recommending city council introduce two pieces of legislation, one appropriating the necessary funding, and the other authorizing the two property acquisitions.
Thank you very much. Do I have an introduction of the first item, amending the ordinance to make adjustments to the appropriations, please?
Introduced.
Introduced by Councilman Wallace. And now, an introduction, please, of an ordinance authorizing the city to obtain an interest in the real estate.
So introduced.
Introduced by Councilwoman Mays. Thank you.
And we'll certainly speak with the gentlemen who commented this evening and make sure that we are conducting all necessary due diligence. Our initial review and the research that we've done, we feel pretty confident, but want to make sure before we take any significant steps, so.
Thank you.
Next this evening, staff is requesting city council approve as an emergency an ordinance appropriated additional funding for environmental assessment at the former Kmart site, and authorize change order number three with Burgess and Nyple for Phase II environmental site assessment at the same location. Subsequent to the additional round of soil gas sampling recently completed by BNN, results were shared with the Ohio EPA. In a follow-up discussion about two weeks ago with EPA officials to evaluate the most recent results, the agency staff laid out additional requirements for additional probes and sampling needed to continuing, needed in an attempt to continue to determine whether the volatile organic compounds observed at the site through testing are coming from the former Kmart site, or whether they're migrating onto the site. Confirming where these VOCs are coming from and then developing a plan for mitigation of the substances are required steps to secure the covenant not to sue, which is necessary for our development partner to take possession of the site and secure financing for new development in the works. Staff request approval of this emergency ordinance and authorization for the change order this evening in order to expedite the additional round of testing and return results as soon as possible.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency, to pass the item in the amount of $15,000?
So moved as an emergency?
Thank you. Moved by Councilwoman Mays, second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Discussion or question on our first motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Now, a motion, please, to authorize the city manager to execute the change order with Burgess and Nyple. I'll make that motion, second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the Vice President. Discussion or question on the second motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
For the final scheduled item this evening, staff is requesting two actions necessary to facilitate the construction of the OVCH sewer lift station. As city council recall, construction of the sewer lift station is required at the OVCH Industrial Park prior to any new development at the site, and we do expect that the Ohio Department of Transportation will be ready to commence work on their new maintenance facility at the site later this year. In anticipation of this, funding for the lift station has been planned in the five-year CIP and was included in the 2017 capital budget. While funding is included in the budget, in evaluating necessary steps to engage the sewer lift station project, staff discovered that the project funding was inadvertently budgeted in the incorrect line. As a result, it is necessary for city council to approve by motion the transfer of funds from line 665-1336-55599 into account line 665-1332-55599 to properly align the funding. Additionally, staff recommends city council approve a motion to authorize a contract with DPNL for installation of electric service for the lift station. Approval of these actions will allow these important steps to be executed, thus paving the way for ODOT to engage their construction on the project later this year.
Thank you. May I have a motion, first, to transfer the requested funds from the noted lines, please?
Make that motion.
Moved by the Vice President, seconded by the mayor. Discussion or question on the first motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mays.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
And now, motion, please, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with DPNL.
So moved, Mr. President.
Moved by the Vice President, second, please.
Second.
Seconded by the mayor. Discussion or question on the second motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman May.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Having the floor, I have a couple of other updates this evening I wanted to provide. First, we have successfully completed the firsthand invention at the Green County Fairgrounds. I think for the first go-at, things went pretty well. We did experience some fairly substantial backups on a couple of the major routes Friday. I think once some tweaks were made at the actual fairground site to expedite some of the incoming traffic, we were able to begin to alleviate that. Traffic through the remainder of the weekend was fairly minimal, I mean, more than, more than average, but no significant issues were reported. We have a follow-up meeting scheduled next Wednesday with the administrative team that's provided oversight for the planning of the event to start the after-action conversation and talk about how we move, improve for the future. Hamvention has signed a three-year contract with the Green County Fair Board, and so we anticipate their presence, at least for the next couple of years. But again, as we talked about in our special session earlier this evening, they've expressed the intent of trying to make this event located on a permanent basis at the fairgrounds. Terms of local impact, I think the jury's still out. We will make some attempts over the next few days to do some onsite visits with some of our various different types of retailers to kind of gauge their experience. Early returns are not overwhelmingly positive. Despite our efforts in working with our business community and marketing, I think the bottom line is we just don't have enough hotel capacity in Xenia. So a lot of the folks who are coming to the event were staying external to Xenia, which means that they were also having a drink with a friend or having supper somewhere else. So I think we have some work to do to try to continue to promote these local businesses, given how much of a contribution that, you know, our community has made for the event. All things considered, it was a good event. Rain put a damper on things a little bit. For the public's interest, I think it's important to point out that the soccer fields adjacent to the fairground site are not owned or operated by the city. Those are county facilities operated by the county. So it was not the city's decision to host the event, not our decision to use the soccer fields there. So the county has already made plans in advance of the event that if any, there were any damages, that they would, they would repair those damages. So again, any concerns we have on that will forward to the county, but I'm sure that they'll take the necessary actions to repair those fields. So all things considered, it was a good event and a good publicity for the city and for Green County, and so we'll work with them moving into the future.
Thank you.
The development and I, director and I, just returned from our trip to the ICSC Conference West. It's the largest retail conference in the world, and I mean, it's a pretty overwhelming event for those who have any familiarity with it. Our goals included soliciting retail vendors to the city to consider expansion here in our community, connecting with developers and retail property owners with current interest in Xenia, to look at enhancing those relationships and how we can discover, coordinate to encourage growth at their, their properties, and really devalue the overall retail environment and specifically the Xenia market to better inform how we would move forward with our retail recruitment efforts. Our retail recruitment consultant, retail coach, developed an itinerary for us, including setting up and attending meetings with multiple retailers. Additionally, we had productive meetings with developers, leading to some follow-up work that we'll share with council in the coming weeks. Staff will be evaluating, experiencing, the experience and assessing how, you know, what we need to do to sort of adjust our overall retail recruitment approach, and we'll come back later, probably later this summer with some follow-up and some, some next steps and some recommendations moving forward. So I think two, two maybe keys in terms of reactions that we got, I think we, we've had some very positive interest, maybe more positive than we anticipated from retailers like food service vendors. But the volatility of the market today is such that these corporate entities are very reluctant to expand. So we're going to have to work with franchisees to see some of these opportunities in our community. I think the other big takeaway is that we continue to be challenged by the proximity that we have to Beaver Creek. That was a consistent thing that we heard over and over, despite the fact that we can substantiate having a separate and fairly substantial marketplace. A lot of these folks are, are going to look at Beaver Creek and say they're too close. So that's a challenge that makes our job a lot more difficult in marketing to potential investors in our community. So again, we'll be coming back to, to council with some updates. Reminder that First Fridays is next Friday. Of course, didn't get to participate in May due to weather, so keep your fingers crossed that next week, things will cooperate, the weather will cooperate a little bit better. We invite all of the council members and community to come out to our first, First Fridays event this year. Finally, I wanted to address some of the weather concerns from yesterday. I know we've gotten some questions from media and some complaints from residents. It's a, it's a longstanding issue in this community that desires, I think, some policy, some permanent policy direction. The city does operate a shelter at our Public Service Center at 966 Tyler Road. However, the city has not previously and does not currently guarantee that that shelter will be open as soon as tornado sirens are launched. So we had multiple tornadic incidents yesterday that were largely unanticipated. National Weather Service did not even have us in an enhanced risk, risk zone. All of the conditions sort of came together and were just right for the perfect storm, literally, yesterday. So we had the first tornado warnings that were issued in our region here in Green County that included part of our service area a little after eight. The shelter was not opened by Xenia Police Division till about 8:30. So there is a little bit of a gap there, but I want to make a couple important notes. First note is that that first tornado warning was for southwest Green County, didn't, didn't constitute Xenia proper, so there was no imminent danger to our residents. Second, no matter when a tornado warning is issued, in particular, if it's issued when we have had no tornado watch or no other information from NWS, the only response we can provide is the closest public safety unit. And in some cases, if they're on another call, if we are having a busy call volume night, if there are preceding weather events that they're responding to, there may be some time that it will, it will take for a public safety unit to get to the, the service center site to open it up. We never, never, never advise people to leave the safety of their homes to go to a shelter. You are still safer in a mobile home than you are getting in your car and trying to beat out a tornado to get to a shelter. And I think this is something that we, as, as an organization, need to promote more widely in our community. We had approximately 15 to 20 people who ended up seeking shelter at Xenia, or excuse me, at the Tyler Road facility at the service center last night. We had an officer or sergeant who, who accompanied them, was there during about an hour and a half duration while we had, I think, a total of four tornado warning, warnings that were issued for our region. It's also important to note that many times tornado warnings will be issued for a portion of our coverage area, and because we dispatch and provide coverage for multiple jurisdictions around us, we have to launch sirens for that entire jurisdiction. So in some cases, Xenia proper may not be within the path of an oncoming storm, but sirens will launch here simply because it's part of our overall network. So we continue to refine this. We want to, we want to provide options for safety for residents, but that, the tornado shelter at, at the service center is not operated with the guarantee that it will be open and available 24/7/365 as soon as, as a, as a warning issue is, is issued. It's really intended more for people who are working, visiting the, the facility or who are visiting the park during, you know, business hours. So I think this is an issue we'll probably come back to council and want more discussion so we can be very clear with the public, and we just simply do not want people getting in their cars, driving to that facility when they hear a tornado warning. That is actually the exact opposite of what they should be doing. So again, just wanted to provide an update there. And I think I mentioned in a briefing to council a while back, we are working on some pretty comprehensive updates to our emergency operations response plans. We're planning a pretty substantial training event for later this year. I think we're shooting for October in conjunction with a number of different other entities, where we'll be doing a full-scale, not just tabletop, but actual, an incident, we're hoping to involve fire and police on a full-scale basis. It's been a number of years since we've done a, a, a training of this type, and so we're, you know, it's, it's, it's time that we do that, make sure that all of our staff are up to date. So that's all I have this evening, a little long-winded, but wanted to provide some updates.
Thank you very much. Anything for our city manager this evening?
Before we leave the city manager, I would like to find out why we don't have the contract for the Simon Kenton building. I was expecting that tonight.
Yeah, quite simply, more than anything, we practically could not get it put together in time, working with Mr. Stokely to get it, or we're anticipating bringing it back the next meeting. I will say also, noting that our, Mr. Lauterbach was not going to be here tonight, he had called me and said he wouldn't be here, and, and I, you know, I said, basically, we probably wouldn't have it prepared, but we'd hold off till that first meeting in June, as we did with the prior, the prior discussion, to make sure we get all seven folks here. So we will have that here for the first meeting in June, and we don't have the purchase agreement complete yet, but it is, it is in process. So we will do that the first meeting in June.
We want all seven of us, yeah, okay.
Anything else for the city manager, please? Seeing none, moving to the finance office. Mr. Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too appreciate council's recognition earlier this evening. I have two items this evening, the first of which, I'm asking for passage as an emergency of an ordinance to waive competitive bidding and authorize the city manager to purchase Data Yard internet services for a not exceed amount of $1,183 per month for a total over a 36-month contract of $42,588. Our existing agreement with Data Yard for three years is expiring, and we are looking to do a new three-year contract, which would have the win-win situation of increasing the bandwidth from 20 megabits to 100-megabit connection, as well as doing that for $87 less per month. Would also have the advantage of we're looking to move the service to this administrative building, so we would have a connection at the Justice Center and a connection here to add additional redundancy. Our IT Director Edgar is here if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, as an emergency to pass the issue and save $87 per month?
Don't move. Second.
Moved and seconded by the mayor and Councilman Wallace, respectively. Any discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman May.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Second item I have this evening is scheduled bills in the amount of $433,266.06.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to pay our bills this evening?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman May. Second, please. Seconded by the vice president.
No questions?
Question from the mayor.
Question. I didn't get to talk with you earlier about this, so you can get back with me if you want.
Sure.
But I noticed in the financial report, it says that Data Yard, that amount, I don't understand that date unless that's a three-year con, previous three-year contract or something. I don't know. It's on page three.
Yeah, we'll look at that. That may be just a three months in the interim before they, that we begin the contract that we just, the council just approved. But I will check.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's exactly that. Quick math in public. Any other questions on the bills, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman May.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything for our finance director this evening, please? Seeing none, Mr. Law Director.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we have a second reading of a resolution, and it's a resolution providing for assessments to be levied and authorizing the finance director to certify those assessments to the county auditor. It was originally introduced by Councilman Lauterbach.
In Councilman Lauterbach's absence, I will move for passage and ask for a second.
A second.
Seconded by the vice president. Discussion or question on this motion, please? Seeing none, roll call?
Vice President Smith.
Aye.
Councilman Wallace.
Aye.
Councilwoman May.
Aye.
Mayor Bayless.
Aye.
President Engel.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Anything for our law director this evening, please? Seeing none, we'll move to reading of communications and discussion. Councilman Wallace, please.
I am without comment tonight. I did get a chance to visit from afar the splash pad opening today in dedication, and it was impressive and enjoyed the mayor's comments and the Bennett family comments, and it was, it was just beautiful affair. I did notice there was one little splash going out.
We noticed as well.
Lee was brave to go through the splash pad after he turned it on, but it was very nice. It's going to be a wonderful venue, and it's, I had driven past the site a number of times, but this was the first time I actually got out of my car and was walking in the area. It's beautiful, and I'm confident that our citizens are going to enjoy it. It's, it's just wonderful.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Mays.
Thank you. I was actually very disappointed to miss the ribbon cutting today. Been looking forward to this and wasn't able, unable to attend, but on my way here, despite the rain, I took some pictures of kids still playing in the splash pad tonight, and I thought that was great. So I wanted to say thank you as a council member and as a mom. Thank you. And I was also at the Xenia High School graduation last night, and I wanted to congratulate our grads, and specifically Ms. Daywin Travis, give her a shout out. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mayor?
Thank you. I did attend the Night of Champions, as some others did as well, and that was held at Athletes in Action, and it was the induction for the Hall of Faith, and they inducted two, the nation's only two-time Heisman Trophy winner Archie Griffin and the U.S. Women's Soccer National Team member Kat Whitehill. So that was all, it's always a wonderful ceremony. And also attended the opening ceremony for Hamvention. It was very interesting, and afterwards, I did walk around the grounds and just talk to people along the way and ask them where they were from, and it's always good to hear how far people travel. So many thought of it as really a reunion, and they said they liked to come to see the people. They communicate with them a lot and sometimes don't have a chance to meet them, and so this is an opportunity for them to meet. So it was good. I was to attend the Blessing of the Bikes. That was to be on Sunday, but that was postponed, and I think the date, as I looked online, it's the next date is June the 4th. And the graduation was very interesting. Despite the weather, they did get through the whole ceremony. The only thing that was left out was the alma mater at the end, and then, of course, processional. But there were four of us from council who were in attendance, and we were all very active in trying to see what we could do, but the crowd really behaved well and followed the directions. Most just stayed right in the building as they were instructed to do, and I'm thankful that we got home safely. We sat on 35 for a long time because somebody made a wrong turn, and they were going westbound in the eastbound lane, and so there was no accident, and I'm thankful for that as well. And then today, we were very fortunate to have the beautiful dedication for our new splash pad at the Bike Hub, and it was named in honor of Richard Bennett. He was an educator, a coach, and a community supporter, and he had a lot of his family there, and it was a great day. And as soon as it ended, the rain came and it poured, so we, we were glad we were able to make it through that as well. I think that's all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. My apologies for my absence at the last meeting. You know, none of us on council lightly miss a meeting, and, you know, we have work obligations, so I appreciate you allowing me to miss that meeting and for excusing my absence. I'd like to hats off and thank our, our city staff for all the work that they put in the hours to, to help with Hamvention. I, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our city. We'll get that tweaked out, and, and that'll, that'll be a wonderful addition to our agenda every year. So, so thankful to have that in our town. Also, was able to attend the dedication at the splash pad, and thank you again for our city staff for putting that together. I know years ago, when I first came on council, that was a dream to have something like that, and I can't thank our city manager enough for working the numbers so that we can have these amenities for our citizens. Xenia's a great community, and I'm very thankful for what we have to offer our citizens. So also last night, also at graduation, and hats off to the Nutter Center staff and the citizens for doing what they were told, staying put, listening, a little chaotic with some sirens, a little scary, saw some crying going on, but the best decision was to stop the ceremony and seek shelter. So I know some people were a little disappointed that the ending was so abrupt, but it, it is what it is, and safety is first. So I, I really feel that we had God's protection over our citizens, both here in Xenia and the 3,000, 4,000 people that were at Nutter Center. So I, I think that's just a wonderful thing. That's all I have, and look forward to seeing everybody at the next meeting.
Thank you very much. I have nothing of tremendous substance to offer, other than to reinforce that First Fridays is coming up. We all were certainly disappointed to miss the May First Fridays, but hopefully, the June weather will be a bit drier than May, and we can have a grand time opening the, the summer session for the city's downtown event.
We all forgot the mayor's prayer breakfast in the morning. We all forgot the mayor's prayer breakfast in the morning.
Oh, I forget that every time.
Every year. So in the morning, what time do we do there, Mayor?
7:30.
7:30.